Going to call the July 27, 2020, La Porte County Council meeting to order. If you haven't silenced your phone, please do so now. We're going to stand for the pledge.
Terry, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people, to the citizens, one nation, under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Monitor.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Excuse me. Mr. Mullenauer?
Present.
Mr. Novak?
Present.
Mr. Quinn?
Present.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
Present.
Mr. Santana?
Present.
And Mr. Yagowski?
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Approval of the, before I ask for approval of the July 27, 2020 agenda, I would like to add one item under New Business. Item number six would be permission to spend in the Clerk's perpetuation fund and slash the 4D fund, not to exceed $4,500 for a copying machine. This is through Darlene. They think they can take half out of one fund and half out of the other.
Close the amount?
Not to exceed 4,500.
Mr. President, make the motion to approve the agenda.
Has amended?
Has amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the June 22, 2020 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mullenauer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is now open. Anybody from the public like to speak?
Anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Anybody from the public? Public comment is now closed. Department head reports? Anybody, any department head would like to? No department heads? Liaison reports? Let's start with Mr. Santana on the.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Nothing from me either.
Mr. Mullenauer?
We've got a couple of things. On June 24th, I attended the La Porte County redevelopment meeting. And on October, I'm sorry, on June 24th, oh, two, I attended a committee meeting on the 24th for the redevelopment. Then I also attended a committee meeting for small business grant on the same date. On June 25th, I attended by Zoom at that one, for that one, countywide COVID-19 meeting that was presented by President Novak. On July 13th, I attended a special council meeting that was regarding the Michigan City Courthouse construction project. And on July 22nd, I attended a solid waste district board meeting. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
Basically, I spoke with the sheriff, kind of some of his issues here in the last month. Also spoke with the recorder on some of the things she has done and returning money back to us and shifting it around, taking an employee and putting in her perpetuation fund to help the county. I attended a Zoom FEMC meeting and also was available last week where I attended a personnel meeting that they were having.
Thank you. Mr. Yagowski?
Yes, please. We just talked about a little bit about budget hearings, but just something else to remind everybody for the IT situation. We went and got rid of the printing, in-house printing. And I understand that the idea of the COVID thing, that we haven't been going out much, but I want to remind all department heads and we need to send notice out to them that we have a printing company that we agreed to use. It's not cost effective to be using our copy, copy machines to produce mass amounts of paperwork that can be done with the printer, printing company across the street. So I just want to remind everybody, and by the way, there was nobody, they could, there was a list of a couple of people to use. So it wasn't as if we had one group that, if they have a preference to use it, it's fine. But we try to find some money savings. I know it's something new. It's always hard to change, but we have to stop using for mass copying the copy machine because it's not cost effective.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenbaum?
I've been in contact with all my liaisons since our, since our special council meeting, mostly in lieu of, because of the budget hearings. I also attended the redevelopment commission, the small business grant, OKRA. I'd like to make a statement about the OKRA grant. A lot of that work was done by a few individuals and mostly through our economic development group that's going to do a presentation in a few moments. And then, and so I thought that the redevelopment commission should have been the ones to be honored and have the press release at that time at their meeting. That's all my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to state, for lack of time, I attended a lot of meetings, so been busy. We'll move on to New Business. Public hearing on the OKRA grants, round two. Tony Rodriguez, Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'm going to do my best to be extremely brief here, but this is what's, what's shown on your agenda this evening is, it mentions round two. The state refers to, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs refers to this as the COVID Phase Two Small Business Low to Moderate Income Assistance Program and have been invited to reapply for Phase Two. So this evening, the mechanical action that's necessary would be to open a public hearing, which has been properly advertised for this evening, starting at 5:00. So if we could just open that public hearing, if any of, anyone present would like to comment for or against. Our intent is to duplicate the success of Phase One in assisting those small businesses that are, of course, hardest hit in this regard and duplicate the success that councilmen and all the numerous partners that have played a critical role in making this all possible. We'll duplicate, we hope to be able to duplicate, if successful, in being approved for the Phase Two program. So with that.
So at this time, we'll open up the public hearing for the OKRA grant, round two. So if anybody from the public would like to speak on, before, on behalf or against the county applying for the OKRA grant, round two. So anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public?
I would just add, Mr. President, not to interrupt you, but there's also a sign-in sheet here that, that they could also sign in and we'd have documentation of their appearance.
Do you need people here to sign in? Or no? Only if they want to speak, she's in, yes?
For, yes.
Okay.
That would be great. Thanks.
Sounds good. Hearing nobody, public comment is now closed. So the public hearing is closed. Anything else you need?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move right into the second item on that, the second matter on, on the agenda this evening, which is our presentation of the semi annual report at the request of the common council. There is in January, a, the mechanical approval of the budget, which approves it on a six-month basis. So we wanted to assure that we gave a reappear before you this evening and give a snapshot of some of what's gone on the last six months. As many of you know and have been directly involved in a lot of what we're doing, I would just like to very quickly touch on some of the highlights. I don't believe the timing could have been better, quite frankly, to roll out a new county, a countywide website, one that is, accommodates the new handheld, the number of handheld devices that people access the website through. But not right, approximately 300,000 unique visitors in that six-month window that are actively tracked through the analytics of the website. We, and we know a lot of this traffic is direct hands-on type traffic through the county's website because of a billboard that was part of the 2019, 2020 budget cycle, the deployment of a county billboard that promotes, the tagline is intersection of industry and we're trying to highlight the Kingsbury Industrial Park location as a premier global location for industry and the proximity it's located. In real estate, you sell location, 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 and that's what we're selling at Kingsbury Industrial Park, Kingsbury Industrial Park. And the accessibility and the infrastructure that serves that park that the members, especially the members of the redevelopment commission that have been working so hard to facilitate those, those improvements out of the park. So that billboard drives traffic, that traffic, then we communicate with those prospects that converts into leads. We then facilitate those leads, show them sites, and that translates into economic development opportunities that will create permanent full-time jobs and pay higher than county average wage, wages with benefits that, in a nutshell, is a primary function of what we're trying to accomplish. I would, it would be remiss to not touch on that, the Westville area and the Midwest Trade Center that had been recently acquired approximately a year and a half ago. The North Point Development Group acquired the mid, what was the former Roundy's Food Distribution Center is now home to the primary anchor tenant Dollar General and their temperature-controlled facility, approximately 108 permanent full-time jobs there. There is a, two additional manufacturing tenants that have selected Midwest Trade Center and are creating between the two, just under 50 permanent full-time jobs as well. So we're excited to have played a very close role. Either one of those two are yet ready to make public announcement, but we're working closely with them on doing so. The, we're, we're very excited again to, to be playing a primary role in creating the Welcome Home La Porte County Task Force. And that is a reconvening of a residential market study that will try to help uncover and identify the reasons we're shortcoming on market rate subdivision development in La Porte County. We, you know, I can't in any way minimize the, the effect of COVID on this effort. However, it's important to begin to look to the future and the positive things that will come out of this kind of work. So we're extremely pleased to be presenting the council this evening with the snapshot and a more detailed overview was emailed out to each one of you, but I'm happy to answer questions as well. I do believe there's a mechanical maneuver that would be required to actually reauthorize or, or approve a second half of the annual, semi-annual budget. So that would be the council's, council's pleasure.
Is there any questions for Mr. Rodriguez?
I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you touch upon the broadband task force?
I did, in the spirit of brevity, I did not, but we are extremely.
With COVID-19, it's such an important thing that we get and expand broadband because many of us experienced while working from home, some difficulties as all the students were also working from home and we were just getting sucked down.
So councilman, you're just raising the topic. It's not less than approximately 25% of our staff time is spent on that topic alone and there couldn't simply be more than.
I just wanted to recognize more than anything.
Yes.
So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of how important it is and it's at the top.
Yes.
It is at the top of our list. And just very quickly, three, the three most southern school districts in La Porte County, we have worked cooperatively on doing a joint three school district cooperative Gears Grant application to combat the connectivity issues. And we're very pleased with what we're hearing from AT&amp;T Mobile and some of the partner, the big name partners that are stepping up to assist. So it's.
It can't happen fast enough.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment or question for? Tony? Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is consider retroactive approval for county council president authorization to hire replacement position for field officer coordinator and administrative coordinator for community corrections.
So I'll make a motion to approve the authorization to hire.
Turn your mind.
I'll make a motion to approve the authorization to hire replacement positions for field office coordinator and administrative coordinator for community corrections.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Is there any other questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number four, discussion on transit triangle. I had this added to the agenda just to make it clear. La Porte City has pulled out of the transit triangle program and the county council did not fund it last year and that the county council at this time has no intention of doing any future funding of the transit triangle as it stands. So I just wanted to make sure that that is clear and that we were completely on the record with that.
If you don't mind, Mr. President, I'd like to make a vote for that tonight in Austin.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we make it clear that we are not participating in the transit triangle for 2021.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, not to participate in the transit triangle for 2021. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, just, just a comment. Are we going to have then, I think it would be prudent to have the attorney draw up, you know, some, some sort of letter to give them a heads up, to let them know that we are, you know, we said we're going to fund it to the end of May of this year and just so that they know that we're pulling out too, so that they can make their plans. Would that be the right way to go, to give them that courtesy?
I don't know if we need to send a letter, but.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Mr. Rodriguez.
He wants to know if we should send a letter to, I guess, Michigan City to let them know that the county council is not going to be funding the transit triangle in 2021.
I believe that that was already before the council. The council already said no.
So really, do we need to send anything to NERPC? And I apologize.
We, we can, but I believe the council has already been heard on that issue.
Mr. Yagowski?
I think with Mr. Santana, I think with Mr. Santana speaking, and I believe he's right, there was some grant money, I think we have to send it for verification because they have grant money for buses that we are not participating. That's the reason why, again, another year, because we, because we're not part of that program. They have, they have grant, they apply for more bus, I know, I know what they came the last.
But we would send the letter to Michigan City.
Correct. Michigan City, correct.
Okay, so direct me to send a letter and I'll be more than happy to send it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, we got it, well, we're going to do the motion first and.
Unless you want to include the letter in your motion.
I'll put in my motion. All right.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Include there.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number five, is discussion on the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project. This time, we're going to talk about, well, I'm going to turn it over to Madam Monitor. Is this where you want to talk about the temporary place, Joey, or do you want to?
Well, excuse me, it's, it's your pleasure. Would you like to talk about it again now?
No, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that's what this is and it's, we're going to do the. Mr. Freeman, come up.
Sure. Mr. Novak, members of the council, we're looking to, the commissioners are looking to get some kind of indication from the council on a temporary quarters for the courthouse offices. As was expressed and explained during the executive session, particularly a concern about continuing operations in the courthouse from a safety standpoint, particularly with COVID-19. The auditor and various other department heads have identified a suitable location at Brown Mackey. And, and we've got the additional benefit, again, as you all know, we've, we've learned as part of the planning that we lose the elevator as part of the renovation and that presents an additional problem for us. The auditor and others have been at this particular facility and have identified it as something suitable. What we would need is some sort of direction from the council to explore negotiations with the, with the landlord. At this point, the auditor has identified for the council and for the commission, two potential sources to pay for this temporary relocation, $350,000 that will be saved from the overall construction cost because of the lesser time that would be involved in construction. And secondly, it's our belief that because this is necessitated largely due to the COVID-19 crisis, that we're going to be able to make submission of at least a half a million of the relocation costs, the temporary relocation costs to the State CARES Act Committee. But we're looking for some guidance tonight from the council so that the commission, the auditor and other department heads can at least pursue this and have some direction from it.
And in point of clarification, the reason we're looking at this now, and we didn't look at this at the beginning, is because the type of financing that we're doing on the building has changed because you want to explain that, because now it allows us to move completely out of the building.
And that is correct. And it's a good clarification, Mr. Novak makes. The, the financing that we had looked at previously was not a general obligation bond. It was a lease transfer and, and under that particular type of debt construction, we would have needed to occupy the building at least for a portion of the, of the time of construction in order to be able to qualify during the financing. With the different types of financing that the council has authorized, that's no longer needed. So we get the advantage of having a shorter construction time and also protecting both the employees and the patrons during that time of construction. I mean, we've already seen with some of the initial work that's gone on, I mean, the noise, the disruption would be considerable to all the offices, the courts there. And, and particularly concerned, as you all are, by the CDC guidelines that indicate the more separation we can get. One of the things that the auditor pointed out, we already had, as you know, a COVID incident at the recent construction site, La Porte Hospital site. So the more that we can get separation between patrons, employees and construction personnel during construction, it's to everyone's benefit.
So you're looking for a vote of support?
That's correct.
That's all we're doing?
Yes.
All right. What's your, what's your preference?
Is it in a motion for?
A motion of support to move forward, to, to inner negotiations and.
I will make that motion of support to move forward with negotiations, to find a temporary facility to move into while the Michigan City Courthouse renovation project is in play. The key reason for me wanting to move forward is because of the ADA compliance. And the other, the other things mentioned.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Mullenauer. Is there any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, just, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be able to support this tonight. I'm going to say that again, I feel like we're being rushed and we have not been given the information totally that we're looking for. Last meeting, there was a couple of council members on the project, concerning the project that weren't comfortable because all of the numbers were not there. And so although it did pass on first reading, we know that there's an opportunity for second reason. But again, because of the variables, the unknowns and just being unsure, again, if it will fall under the CARES Act and, and all of those things, I just, I can't do it without the information, but it looks like it'll go and then that's okay.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the, do you need anything else on that? I think that's, that's sufficient. Next item on the agenda is the item that we had is permission to spend not to exceed $4,500 from the 4D and half from the 4D and half from the Clerk's perpetuation fund for a new copying machine. So she has already talked to you and you've approved it and done everything.
And it is half because 4D is very, it's going to be less than that.
But it's coming out of, between your funds and.
And 4D.
4D funds. Right. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, because there was concern earlier today about it coming out of 4D.
It's, depends on the portion is all they can, the amount that they could use it, they can contribute to.
We, it's very complicated.
It's a great clarification.
We have to, like, let them know how much the copies are going to be made on that machine and it's.
That's fine. I needed that clarification.
Okay.
Because there was serious concern raised before that it could even come out of that fund. And if that is the case, then.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? What's your preference?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mullenauer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Santana. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I wish I'd come, come up earlier, but I'm not going to ask for any money, but I can just ask for a discussion for the new business, if you don't mind.
Sure.
There was some questions, the sheriff can probably help me on this one. Because the schools are not, they were under contract, always yours for us, for the resource officers. We're not coming in now, we're not using, utilizing them because schools aren't there. Are they, are we getting reimbursed? Mrs. Whiskey says we're not, we haven't received our reimbursement for that yet. So I believe we're still under contract. You know, they have janitors, they have school, they're paying other services that are out there, food. We're just another source of this. They're a separate taxing unit. They're getting their taxes, so we, we, we should not have to suffer for that, for this because we are supplying the officers for it. So I want to make sure that we look into the legality of what we've worked with in the past and how we get reimbursed in case school does not open up, because we have not got our full reimbursement from last year, for this year.
Possibly review the agreement to see if.
Agreements, there's different schools, there's, you know.
They are.
There's four different agreements, as far as I remember.
Obligated to continue with the program.
Again, they're a separate taxing, their obligation is to fulfill their contract with us.
Point of clarification, is that agreement, was that between the county attorney or the commissioners or was it between the council?
It would be with the commissioners.
And the council.
And the council.
It'd be both.
I'll get, I'll get with Mr. Freeman and we'll get it worked out.
Nobody knows how much longer this is happening. We have to at least know what reimbursement dollars are from. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. President.
Yes, and I'll definitely look into that along with Mr. DiMartino. Just a housekeeping piece, if we could go back for a second to number two. If we can get the statement of intent, simply to go ahead and fund for the second portion, I know we got to get the formal appropriation in front of you probably next month, but we just got to be able to assure the Office of Economic Development that it's the council's intent to continue operating. You know how we've had this, once every six months, we come in front of you. So if we get something that indicates a statement of intent and then we'll come back with a formal appropriation next month.
Can I get a motion of support for the economic development, for the funding of the second half?
Motion approved.
So I have a motion by Mr. Yagowski or by, was that, who did that? Sean or Jeff?
I think it was Sean. I didn't want to cut him off, it's hard.
So motion by Sean, seconded, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. And economic development's been doing a great job. So hearing that, a motion of support for funding them, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Before we move forward, may I? Sorry. I have to go back, no, I have to go back to number one. We had the, the public hearing. There's no, we don't need to do anything.
They're going to come before us for the.
So that'll be.
Right.
Next. Thank you.
Right.
I'm glad I'm speaking in short.
All right. Can we move on now? All right. Now we're good. All right. Any old business? No old business, no correspondence, ordinances and resolutions? Public hearing and ordinance on, from, an ordinance for Michigan City Courthouse renovation renovation project. Mr. Yagowski? Yes, sir. I can make a motion to read by title only.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, to read by title only. This is ordinance 2020-7. Madam Monitor? By title only?
An ordinance of La Porte County appropriating the proceeds of its local income tax revenue bonds.
President, I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance number 2020-7.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Quinn. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Next item is ordinance 2020-7A, Mr. Yagowski?
Mr. President, I'd like to make the same motion, like, ordinance to 2020-7A to be read by title only.
Second that.
A motion, a motion and a second and a third. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Madam Auditor, by title only, ordinance 2020-7A.
An ordinance of LaPorte County, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the county for the purpose of providing funds to be applied on the cost of the renovation and expansion of the county courthouse in Michigan City, Indiana, together with all necessary appurtenances, related improvements and equipment, and the incidental expenses in connection therewithin and on account of the issuance of bonds thereof.
Thank you. What's your preference?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-7A, and I'm glad that Joey had the same problem with the same word that I couldn't, I couldn't say last month's meeting also.
Alright.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Molnauer. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, motion passes, thank you. Appropriations and transfers request, LaPorte County clerk requesting permission to hire for a vacated bookkeeping position. I spoke with the clerk early.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure can.
Patty Zellmer, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I'm following what's going on at your meeting. Um, we, I thought we were to have a public hearing on the additional appropriation.
We still are, we still are.
And is that on your agenda, which I apologize, I do not have in front of me?
It is now.
It is on the agenda, it is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, it is now. See, I even underlined the...
We're supposed to open up a public hearing for folks to speak and ask questions on the additional appropriation ordinance, the 2020-7.
I even underlined the public hearing part, so at this point, we're gonna back up and we're going to open up a public hearing on the ordinances for Michigan City Courthouse renovation projects. Is there anybody from the public alike to speak? Anybody from the public, for or against? Anybody from the public alike to speak? Anybody from the public? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed.
Let me do it again.
Ms. Zellmer?
Thank you. Now I have my second question, and forgive me for not, you know, truly understanding what your local protocol is. With respect to the motions that were just made on each ordinance, were those adoption, uh, motions or just second reading?
Those were second reading, but we need to go back and we should reread the ordinances after the public hearing for a matter of form, and let's put an adoption in there, thank you.
Thank you, yes, I appreciate that very much.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
I'd like to make a motion to read ordinance 2020-7 by title only.
We have a motion to read, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to read by title only, Madam Auditor?
An ordinance of LaPorte County appropriating the proceeds of its local income tax revenue, net revenue bonds. I didn't read that very well.
Okay, no problem. Uh, Mr. President, make a motion for ordinance 2020-7 as read by the auditor to pass.
And adopt.
Adopt, and adopt, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by? Sean, you're gonna second this again?
Yes.
Alright, seconded by Mr. Quinn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Mr. President, make a motion to read ordinance 2020-7A. So Joey's got to practice on that word again, she can go up, please.
Ms. Winkie, would you need a little assistance? It's a pertinent.
Appertainances?
Yep.
Appertainances.
I've got the same thing.
Okay, so since I said it once, I don't have to read that word and do it?
Motion.
We need a second, is there a second to read on title only?
An ordinance of LaPorte County, Indiana. Authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the county for the purpose of providing funds to be applied on the cost of the renovation and expansion of the county courthouse in Michigan City, Indiana, together with all necessary appertainances, how's that? Related improvements and equipment, and the incidental expenses in connection therewith, and on account of the issuance of bonds thereof.
Thank you, all those in favor of her reading it by title only? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Great job.
No.
Alright, Mr. Yagowski?
I think it's Sean's down.
Sean, did you?
No, you did.
Okay, okay, Mr. President, make a motion for ordinance 2020-7A as read by the auditor.
And adopted.
And adopted.
Mike Molnauer.
Second, and Mike, second, a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Molnauer. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Alright. How's that Patty? Much better?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's why you're here.
Uh, no, that's, that's absolutely fine, just wanted to make sure I was understanding that each was being adopted tonight, and we're all good, thank you so much.
The first one was just a practice, so we got it right the second time, so. Alright. Appropriations, transfers and requests. As I was starting to say, this is for the vacating of a bookkeeper who's a very important position. She's a bookkeeper for a lot of people, so go ahead.
Yes, um, Terry Singleton, who's been the bookkeeper in our office. Well, she's been employed by the county for 25 years and bookkeeper probably 21 of them for all of the circuit court and all the clerks' offices. We are saddened and devastated that she decided to retire. She is leaving, Friday's her last day, and she is the main bookkeeper for all of our clerks. So I'm in desperate need to replace that position.
Definitely. What's your preference?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum to permission to hire. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is LaPorte County Sheriff requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or General Fund for the sheriff's pension in the amount of $664,091. Sheriff?
Good evening, this is a request for a second half payment of our 2020 pension payment for merit deputies.
Definitely. Appreciate it. I think everybody knew this was coming, so what's your preference?
Motion to approve out of general.
Motion by Mr. Santana?
Yes.
Okay, alright, is there a second?
Sean.
Sean, you seconding? I didn't hear. Seconded by Mr. Quinn. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
You might have to take note that I have to abstain on that.
Because you are recipient. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let the record reflect that Mr. Molnauer abstained from that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is LaPorte County EMA requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or General for additional tower expenses in the amount of $5,900. Mr. Whitowski?
Mr. President, what we had found was when we took overpaying the expenses for the two towers that we have to take care of, which is Kingsbury and Roanoke Berry, we were given an amount, working with the auditor on that, we were given an amount that was supposed to be enough to get us through the year, and it's the reason we were given $2,100. However, when I got the first bill for one tower, it was over $300 and I knew we were definitely not going to make that. So, other things that need to be done is we need to top off both fuel tanks, because last year, one of the fuel tanks went empty on December 31st, and we paid a very premium price at that time for propane. Uh, if we can get those, get the appropriation, we can get those filled this summer at a whole, much better rate. And then the rest of it is, we need to have both the tower generators, the, um, they need to be maintained. The oils have not been changed in them in three years, and they're recommending every two years.
So just explain that, um, IPSEC?
IPSEC, correct.
IPSEC. Takes care of the towers, what portion they take care of them, what's our responsibility?
So what they do is, we build the towers, they then take care of them. The towers and the electronics inside the building is them. We then take care of everything that's on the property. So the generator, the fuel that runs the generator is all of ours. I contacted the guy, because we did have one generator fail in Kingsbury, we had to have that fixed. That was 300 and some dollars. The closest place that we had that works on those was the ones that put it in, and they're out of Fort Wayne, so they charged from the moment they leave Fort Wayne to here. Luckily, I was able to get it scheduled on a day where they were actually going to Hannah, so we split the cost with them.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the appropriation from the General Fund for additional tower expenses, the amount of 5,900, or not exceed 5,900.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Out of General Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Santana.
Question, question, Mr. Yagowski? Who's changing the oil lines?
Right now, we're, with the company that we had that put the generators in, are the ones that can, the little, unless we can find someone local, I'll have them do it, but...
They charge it for something like that?
For an oil change is $400.
Okay, yes, we have plenty of people that can change oil here in the county.
No, no, it's gotta be, it's under contract, it's under their own warranty. So it's gotta be a generator company, and I was told, uh, Circle C was able to do it. However, when I called them, their company no longer works with this specific generator.
What kind of generator is it?
I'm drawing, oh, I'm not sure.
What's the name of that?
No, it's only three years old.
It's not a Generac?
Yes, it is a Generac, sorry.
So, Current Electric in Michigan City does?
When I called Current, their guy also that they had do it, just retired, and they do not have anyone that is certified for Generac for them. So that's the reason we ended up going to elsewhere.
No, he doesn't do them.
Andy, you don't service Generacs, do you?
I'm certified myself.
Alright, talk to Andy.
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
Alright.
May save a little mileage.
I'd rather keep it local.
How long is the warranty?
What's that? I think the warranty is for five years, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other, um, I want to ask you another question, and this came up this morning. I shouldn't do this in between the vote, but I'm going to. The warranty on the radios was five years?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Not on batteries, just on the rig themselves.
Correct, right. Alright, so we have a motion and a second for $5,900 out of General Fund, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on, thank you, Jeff. Next item on the agenda is LaPorte County voter registration requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or General Fund for replacement of computers in the amount of $5,355.06. And while they were here at budget hearings this morning, they gave an explanation, so.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve out of general.
Motion by Mr. Santana, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is LaPorte County MS4, permission to transfer from professional services and from non-reverting fund to part-time account. So they're taking $4,000 out of account 30135, $3,000 from account 9015, and they're putting $7,000 into their part-time account, which is account 10130.
Yeah, I'm kind of his liaison, his board is approved doing this, and he does have a part-time person that's been doing a wonderful job, and they're getting a lot of, you know, input back. People are going to the site, you know, and actually checking it out, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gardner?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Quinn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is LaPorte County Auditor requesting additional appropriation from Emergency Reserve 1186 for additional COVID expenses in the amount of $100,000. Ms., Madam Auditor, would you give a quick explanation of that we should have?
Well, as, as you'll remember, we, you allocated $300,000 for COVID expenses in March, and we're just, we've just about depleted that. So we need to put a little extra in there until, until we start getting our COVID reimbursements.
That's what I wanted you to give an explanation on where we are with the reimbursements. Have we submitted that, or we gotta be pretty close to submitting the first round of reimbursement?
We, we have submitted all the documentation to Barnes and Thornburg. They're looking it over to make sure it's in the correct format, and we'll be submitting it any day.
Right, and just so everybody knows, we can submit that in increments. It doesn't have to be all at once, we don't have to wait till the end. So we have an excessive, I think, $500,000 that we're submitting for reimbursement, so. What's your preference on the $100,000?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Quinn.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Santana, is there any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Any council comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Rosenbaum?
I have voted no on complications about the Michigan City project. I am not opposed to the Michigan City project at all. I'm opposed to the way some of the process has been handled, and that is what has earned my no vote. And that's my only explanation I'm gonna give at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenbaum.
No, it's me. It's coming out of Emergency Reserve Fund, that's what it's doing.
We're just moving the general and moving it over. Vote from the Emergency Reserve Fund.
To the COVID, it's a special account, it's all in the same, just re-appropriation.
Alright, nevermind, we had a clarification. Alright, Mr. Gardner, you have anything? Mr. Molnauer?
No, nothing.
Mr. Santana?
No, sir.
Alright, Mr. Yagowski?
No, sir.
Mr. Attorney? Alright, Madam Auditor? We have a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.